Good evening, and thank you for joining us. This is May 26th Board of Select meeting. It is 7:01. And those that want to just do the call in, the number is 1-646-558-8656. Then enter the meeting ID, 837-8253-8375. And when prompted as a participant ID, press the pound key. And if prompted for a password, enter 24680. Okay. And as you can see, the Select Board is meeting in unison again. As we have decided that since there's only three of us, we can maintain social distancing and also wear masks. And so, welcome back, Tina and John. And we will now begin with the agenda. A coronavirus community update from Chief Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief because I know you have a robust agenda to address this evening. As of tonight, we have 55 individuals from Holliston who have been diagnosed with coronavirus. Twenty-seven of them have recovered. One unfortunately was a COVID-related fatality, which leaves 27 active cases. Based on the guidance that was issued by the governor and the reopening advisory board last week, we are somewhat in the Phase 1 reopening. We're taking it kind of slow here in Holliston, although there were certain sectors which were allowed under the guidelines to reopen. That doesn't mean that they have all reopened. For example, although some parks and recreation fields are open, some school fields remain closed, which has caused a bit of frustration. And also, the parsing of the definition between passive versus active recreation has been an educational opportunity for us. I am working very closely with the town accountant in preparation for us to submit to the Administration Finance Division at the state government regarding the amount of CARES Act funds that we could be eligible for between now and December 31st. Based on the warrant that you'll be signing this evening, as of tonight, we'll have spent about $40,000 between both municipal side as well as the schools in supplies and materials related to our COVID response. But that does not include any of our personnel costs, and that does not include any expenses that will be incurred this summer as we gear up towards either reopening town buildings or reopening schools in the fall, hopefully. So, we've got a lot of headroom between what we've spent so far versus what we're eligible to apply for. So I'm very confident that we'll be in a good position for that application by the tail end of next week.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Tina?
Just a couple, Chief Cassidy. In terms of FEMA and the CARES Act, the two both potentially can fund the same expense. Is that right? So in terms of like not double dipping, how do we go about, can you just walk me through how we go about submitting for FEMA reimbursement versus CARES Act or this?
Sure. So the A&amp;F memo that came out, which was about 10 pages, did note the areas that would be eligible under CARES that are eligible under FEMA.
Okay.
Not all FEMA expenses or not all CARES Act expenses are FEMA-eligible. There are, so the FEMA authorization is emergency protective action. So that's pretty narrow in the Stafford Act, what that entails. That would not include things like technology to support remote participation. That would not include things like addressing food insecurity. So if we have expenses related to a public safety department, related to coverage due to coronavirus, then that would be an eligible expense under the FEMA reimbursement. But the hourly rates for cafeteria workers who are helping with food service for the community, that is not a FEMA-eligible. So I've got a good handle based on previous FEMA reimbursements I've submitted. And as I said, I'm working closely with the town accountant. So I'm very comfortable that we'll be able to set up a spreadsheet and be able to show which program will apply for funding under which one.
Yeah, because that would be my follow-up. Go ahead.
Yeah, they also have different application deadlines as well.
That was my next question.
We've got to apply to the state by the tail end of next week and certify how much we have spent and how much we anticipate spending in eligible expenses between now and the end of the year. That's very different from the FEMA, which is truly a reimbursement process. The only way that I can submit for reimbursement of 75% of eligible expenses to FEMA is for us to actually have incurred the expense. So if we're thinking about future PPE expenses, we could include those in the CARES Act request to the state government. But if I've already bought the PPE and I have it in hand, then that would be a FEMA-eligible expense, 75%.
And the CARES Act allows you to use the 20, so allows you to use that money for the 25% town match?
With some limitations, yes. There are always some additional constraints.
Okay.
Yes, we have had the ability to use the CARES Act to make up the 25% difference that a federal declaration did not cover. You are correct.
Okay, last question then. It's about the rail trail. Do we know, is there a schedule of patrols on the rail trail? Obviously with the warmer weather coming, there's going to be maybe perhaps a greater need for enforcement. I think we've all fielded some calls or concerns from residents, you know, little bit of finger pointing, but I'm up on the trail, I don't see this, I don't see that. I certainly saw a police presence this weekend. Do you know of a schedule or a plan to put one in place for patrol up there?
So I can tell you that the deployment of public safety personnel is not something that I would discuss in open session.
Okay.
I can assure you that public safety agencies have been very proactive. And when it's nice weather, and when staffing permits, and when other things aren't taking place in our community that allow them the freedom to be able to deploy an officer in resources that they have available, they have been out there. But I wouldn't want to say right now that we're going to be there on Saturday between 10 and 12 because then people will be on their best behavior, be 10 and 12.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
John, questions?
Good evening, Chief. A couple of questions back to the CARE Act if I could. How frequently can we apply for the CARE Act?
Oh, see, here's one of the fun things. We've got to apply now at the beginning of June and anticipate our expenses through the end of December. So if we end up not using all of the money that we say we're going to, then we've got to give it back. So working with the, working with the schools and working with the other municipal departments, we're going to make sure that we are as forward-thinking and out-of-the-box, pie-in-the-sky thinking about what we could possibly have to incur for expenses. Because again, at the end of the day, if by December we haven't spent it, we just give it back to the state.
Who has to approve the submission to the state?
So it is the town accountant who certifies the number that is submitted to the state.
Mr. Ritter, if I could ask for you to direct the town accountant to report her information to us before anything is submitted to the state. I think, Mr. Chairman, we should be receiving a report from the town accountant before anything goes out of the town so we can see what's in that document and understand its full and complete breadth.
Absolutely.
Mike, do you happen to know if the Finance Committee is involved in that process at all?
Not at all. And just as a follow-up to what you just directed the town administrator, the board had already voted last week to direct the town accountant to provide a spreadsheet next Monday night. So we are working with town departments. We've asked them to submit everything to us by close of business on Friday in anticipation of being able to give you a realistic number next Monday night for your meeting, knowing that it has to be submitted by the tail end of next week.
Can you just clarify one thing, Chief Cassidy? You're saying that the chief executive of the municipality, in this case for the CARES Act, would be the town accountant as opposed to the chair of the Select Board or the town administrator?
I can double-check the form, but it was my, it was my understanding from what went out to A&amp;F that the expenses were being certified by the accountant. But I could be wrong because I don't normally deal with A&amp;F. I normally deal with FEMA.
Yeah, okay. It's my understanding that it's the chairman of the Select Board. But I would defer to those who are preparing the report to check on that. So we'll wait till Monday night, I guess, to hear the report.
Sure, I'll follow up and send the board an email as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
So I have something for the chief that is beyond what we've been discussing, so if you want to.
Yes, I just wanted you to clarify for the residents because there is confusion out there. And that is that my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you can't maintain a six-foot distance from others, then you should be wearing a mask. But you need to, you need to maintain a six-foot social distance is the general rule. And then have the mask on you so that if you need to pull it up, should somebody pass you on the sidewalk and there's not six feet, you can pull the mask up. Is my understanding correct?
That is correct. So the requirement of both the governor's order as well as the local Board of Health order is that face covering, approved face coverings, CDC-approved face coverings are to be used when physical distancing cannot be maintained.
Right.
So if you are alone on the sidewalk and there's no one around, then you do not need to wear that face covering. But if someone is approaching you on a bike or on foot, if they're coming towards the tail end of the driveway and it's going to intersect where you are on the sidewalk, then you both, both parties need to be using approved face coverings.
Yeah, because I think there's some, some people, some residents yelling out their windows at anyone they see not wearing a mask. And I'm not sure how best we can get the word out, but they really shouldn't be doing that to other residents, especially.
Yeah, it's not the responsibility of residents to be policing other residents. The way both the governor's order as well as the state order reads, it's to be enforced by the Board of Health or the local or state police.
Right.
So they, well, they can ask. And the enforcement comes in if it's a business, and the business is required that any patron that comes in has to have a mask.
Right.
In that situation, obviously, the business owner or the manager on duty has the ability to advise someone that unless they wear CDC-approved face covering, they cannot enter the premises. But for just somebody walking on the rail trail, walking on a trail in the woods, it absolutely is not their place to be enforcing that. They should just have one to protect themselves and move on.
Right.
And to Ms. Heinz's question, you are correct. I reread Attachment B certification, and it is the chief executive of the community that will be submitting the application.
Very good. John, you said you had one more question.
So, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Heinz, prior to this meeting, I'd reached out to Chief Cassidy to have a kind of an icebreaker conversation with him about putting together some thoughts on how we would pull off an annual town meeting in July. It seems like we're a long way away, but we only have a few weeks to kind of determine if and when we actually have the July meeting.
Right.
We don't know what the phased opening will look like, but yet I asked the chief to begin looking at other communities that are maybe scheduling or having concluded annual town meetings. What did they do? How did they conduct the meeting? What kind of ground rules are in play for us? So that over the next couple of weeks, he can report back to us and give us some sense of whether or not we can hold the town meeting inside, under what conditions, and if we have the right resources to do it. We've had some loose discussions among peers and other stakeholders, but I think using Mike's emergency management coordination, we can get a pretty good idea of the challenges and kind of the logistics of that, of that kind of a meeting.
Absolutely.
So, Mike, if it's okay, I think next week is, next Monday's June 1st, is it premature to ask you to give us some kind of a draft plan? Draft, I mean draft, an outline of what the annual town meeting conditions might look like?
Absolutely. That is, that is not unreasonable. I can tell you that that was a topic of much discussion during the statewide conference call with Boards of Health today. So it's on the mind of a lot of municipal officials, and the state is working on guidance. But just as we saw that the guidance relative to graduations that came out late last week went through multiple iterations and feedback from different stakeholders, it might be an iterative process. I can come to you next week with a framework of what we think will be allowable, and that could change in two weeks. But I absolutely, based on the guidance we have available and everything that comes out between now and next week, I can absolutely, working with the town clerk, town moderator, and your board, obviously, come up with what this vision of a town meeting during a public health emergency could look like.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And now we will take any questions from the conference call that might, someone might have for Chief Cassidy. Just state your name and address, please. Okay, seeing none, we will move on with the agenda to warrants. Mrs. Heinz?
Tonight's warrant is for $1,463,890.03, of which the school payroll, I'm sorry, the town payroll is $161,442.28.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Public comment. Tina?
Yeah, so I just wanted to update the board. We'll be hearing more from the school committee, but on Thursday night, they voted to approve in their open meeting their FY '21 budget for $35,139,715, which represents an increase of 0.54% over fiscal year 20, or about $192,000. So again, they voted to approve that amended budget. Their previous budget that they voted to approve in April before the revised budget guidelines came in was actually a 2.7% increase. So I believe they worked quite hard to find areas where they could trim back to get as close to the 0% as possible. And then the second is they have discussed capital requests somewhat. They are anticipating, not to put words in their mouth, but to kind of summarize the comments that I heard. Again, we'll hear specifically from the school committee, but they're looking at an increase in what's currently in the warrant for a capital request from, for technology from about $375,000, $400,000 up to about $518,000. As I understand from their comments, that's in large part due to the technology that they feel they're going to need to change the delivery of education that they anticipate for the fall and the next academic year with the pandemic having the impact that it's going to have on all public schools. They're thinking about, we'll see what they have to say, it'll be their decision in the end, two phases of capital requests. The first would be the technology for July perhaps, and then the Miller roof coming later. It looks like at this point, the committee in field, again, based on their comments, will come off. We'll hear from them with the final say, but I just wanted to give you an update.
Thank you.
From Thursday night's school committee meeting.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
John, I just wanted to extend a thanks again to Holliston's veterans for pulling off a very meaningful brief, but touching Memorial Day event yesterday. It's always one of the days of the year when everybody has to stop and think a little deeper on what brought us here. So they did a nice job. Thanks very much to them and for HCAP for covering it for the citizens' benefit. So thank you for that.
Yes, very nice. And I will ditto that. It was very nice to have Mr. Blair's clear, deep voice speaking. And a thanks to Steve Bradford, who puts in so much time for this town on more than, more than one organization too. So thank you to all of the veterans, and we appreciate everything you do for the community. Anyone from the conference call have any public comment? Mr. Ritter?
No.
Well, then we will have your report, Mr. Ritter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to draw your attention to the fact that we're on the precipice of the summer. And if you can let our offices know if you have any plans for any vacation time.
Okay.
All right? And also, you want to think about whether or not you want to go to a bi-weekly meeting schedule, which has been the custom with some boards. Other boards like to meet every week, but I would like you to think about that anyway coming up.
Okay.
I'm going to be taking some vacation time here shortly. I've got at least two weeks that I've accrued, and I need to take it or lose it.
Right.
So I'm going to be over the next several weeks, probably taking days, not weeks, at a time. So just so you know, that is in the works.
Okay.
We had a very productive telephone conference call with staff last Thursday, I think it was, or Wednesday regarding the Lowland Industrial Park and the truck traffic that's out there. As you know, the police chief has prepared a letter to be sent to all the business owners that are out there. And we're working to include a map or maps to that letter so that the business owners can understand, you know, what we're working on. The first map will show the preferred truck route, the preferred truck route. And the second map would show a proposed truck exclusion route. That will be followed up with a meeting here on, what we're forecasting for is on June 30th. And all of the businesses will be notified of that meeting as well. And residents, the best we can, the best of our ability. So that's it.
Jeff, on that matter, I was under the impression that leading up to the meeting in June, that the planning board would also be weighing in on this matter. It's been our thought, I think, that something more sustainable in the form of bylaw change may be necessary for some kind of a long-term solution. The chief's memo is, after all, just guidance, and I'm hoping that the planning board understands that we're looking for them to take the lead to some extent on long-term sustainable changes.
We had asked them to.
They were on the conference call.
To have a vote for their committee. We wanted a vote from them as to their recommendation for this board to look at.
So to the extent that that comes in on an upcoming agenda, if it hasn't already, it'd like to be updated well before the June 30th timeframe. I'm guessing, given the timeframe and the fact that we haven't heard from them on that, that there's not likely to be an article for the July town meeting yet. I would like to be informed about what they want to do, what's their timeframe. We have an issue and we need their help.
And Jeff, you would anticipate that they'll be invited to that June 30th, the proposed June 30th meeting?
The planning board?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Do you think that it would be wise for us to meet with the planning board with our committee one-on-one to talk about some of this, or no?
I do. I think it would be a wise thing to do.
Yeah, I think we.
Who's the liaison, do you know?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either. I'll have to tap my head.
That might be where we should start.
Okay.
So it's not a bad idea.
I have sent an email to Karen Sherman about it, too.
I'd go to the chair.
But, yeah. I think, I think we will contact the chair of the planning board and ask them if they want to have a meeting together.
Is it me? Oh, it's Mark.
Oh, me? Okay.
Congratulations.
That's why I probably called Karen because.
Right.
So here's the thing, I mean, if the chair says, "All well and good, Mark, you know, good ideas, but nobody in my committee has an interest in this," then I, my path on this journey takes a different turn.
Right, right.
We need their help. So, yeah, if you can get an answer what they're thinking of doing.
I'll reach out to the chair. I thought by reaching out to Karen was the way to go because she runs the office and is in contact with everyone, but I'll reach out to the chair.
They did discuss it at their last meeting. They are very well aware of the efforts of this board to address the resident concerns and the business concerns that we're hearing too. So they're certainly aware. I'm blanking right now if they took a vote. I don't have their meeting minutes in front of me, but they discussed it at length. And John, to kind of answer your question about their interests, I think they're very motivated and interested to get involved.
Oh, that's outstanding. Thanks, great.
Wonderful. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
FY '21 budget review, we've got the animal control budget, we've got auxiliary police, streetlights, and accountant to do first. Jeff?
So the first one is your animal control budget. As you know, this is a contracted agreement between the town of Ashland and Holliston. We were, we were looking at a 1% increase, which would be for FY '21, which would have been $38,380. The level funded budget is coming in, obviously, at $38,000. So this is a pretty routine matter, and I would recommend approval.
Okay. John?
Jeff, Sharon's sheet indicates no July payment. Is that because Ashland and Holliston don't exchange expenses associated with the MOU until another date in the fiscal year?
Yeah, normally, we get a bill from Ashland sometime in the end of the fiscal year, and it hasn't come in yet.
So in other words, they don't have to be in play for the 1/12 exercise as shown?
No, but they've been informed, they'll be informed.
Got it. And the only other item in terms of budget review is that we have an unfinished MOU. There was some work that you may remember, the chief and other officials from Ashland came in and talked to us about the changes they wanted to make on the MOU. We have some work to do on that. I think it's still a very open issue.
Yeah, it really hasn't been reviewed in a long time, so.
I understood that, but I also saw some savings in that budget that I think we should try to make use of.
Yeah.
For now, I think going forward with $38,000 as a base is fine, but we need to be mindful that this is an open administrative issue that needs to be clarified.
Right, right. Any questions, Tina?
You know, I mean, I'm just looking for a timeline for when conversation, discussion will start up, back up again on the MOU with Ashland. I do recall their chief, I think, coming in to talk to us, but it was early in January or it was even December.
Before everything, yeah.
And they were going to get back to us with, they were looking into some, I think, some issues with the vehicles and some other pieces to the agreement, and we didn't, I don't believe we heard back from Ashland.
No. Jeff, can you give them a phone call?
I can.
See where things are?
I can absolutely do that.
Report back, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the animal control budget, 0% at $38,000 for FY '21.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Auxiliary police budget.
I think they're on that.
Are we, do we have a representative on?
That's George.
George?
George Lorini.
George Lorini?
HPD lieutenant.
I'm here.
There he is.
Hi, George.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
How are we doing, everybody?
Good, thanks. Yourself?
Outstanding.
Excellent. Can you go over your budget, sir?
Sure, I was asked to have a level funded, so keep it simple. I had to deduct $138 from my professional development line, which is 57100, and which the accountant, she agreed, and she removed the $138.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, Tina?
Just what that, what that represents in terms of professional development. One less person attending.
Yeah, the professional development just covers instructors coming in. Every year, it's mandatory that auxiliaries get in-service training, legal updates, motor vehicle law, animal cruelty. It won't have a big impact on my budget.
Okay. Thank you.
John, any questions?
The only thing I want to confirm, Lieutenant, is $13,764 is your 0% guideline budget?
Correct.
Okay.
The budget I'm looking at has a misleading guideline of 1%, and following that to the right indicates the number is $13,764, but I think that's just erroneous because the...
Yes, I did have a carryover for the police academy, so I did have to get them.
Okay. But as you can see, it's the adjuvantal appropriation FY '20, so I'm good, Mark.
Yeah.
Can we have a motion, John?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve the auxiliary police budget for FY '21 at $13,764.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Streetlights, Jeff?
Yes, sir. So the 1% increase for FY '21 was forecasted to be $63,054 or a $624 increase. A level funded budget for this, from FY '20, is $62,432. And we believe the run rate is pretty good, and we should be able to fit within that number of 62,432.
What was, can you refresh our memory, last year, what did we pay? Was it 62?
Yeah, yes, it was $62,432. We have 919 fixtures or lights in town, and, you know, the $624 leveling off should not have a significant impact on that budget.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
John?
Just a comment, LED. Other than that, I'm good.
We'll get that.
I hope so someday.
Motion to accept.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It's a 62,432.
Correct.
And the accountant, Sharon? Sharon, are you with us?
If you want muted, me, I am.
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
I was muted earlier.
Oh!
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Take your time.
There you go. Yeah, my budget that I submitted originally was under my prior year budget, so I really didn't have to change anything. I was already less than level funded.
Wow.
My, the salary, the clerk that I have now is getting paid less than the clerk that I used to have.
Right, right. I remember you telling us that earlier.
Yeah.
Very good. Any questions, Gina?
Just if, I don't have your budget in front of me, Sharon, so I apologize. Are there any COLAs in your staffing line items?
No, she has, she has steps, but we took the COLAs out of all of the, all the pay charts that Mary does, the salary charts.
So that keeps the budget what it was when you first presented it, 175, 104?
I think it's, I'm sorry, I'm upstairs at my house and my budget is downstairs. It is, it went down slightly, but my original budget was already-
0%.
-under a prior year budget. I will send you a corrected one, I'm sorry. I forgot to have it when I came back upstairs to get on the computer.
Mark, we're approving budgets tomorrow as well. Should we just, you're on the call every night this week, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
So why don't, why don't we approve your budget tomorrow, then?
Okay, that's fine. I apologize. I'll send it to you all this evening so you have it-
Oh, perfect.
For tomorrow.
John has a question for you.
Sharon, good evening. I just wanted to note, in your budget, as well as all the other department head budgets, that we see zero guidelines that include the annualized department head salaries. So to the extent that you offer us a budget tomorrow night, make sure it includes your annualized increase for FY '21.
Absolutely, yep. That's what I told everybody.
Excellent.
And if you could provide me that updated spreadsheet tomorrow, that would be even better.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sharon. We'll talk to you tomorrow night.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. All right, moving on to more budget reviews, the assessors. Are you with us?
I'm here.
Hi, Mary.
I'm here, Green Deal.
How are you?
How are you?
Good, thanks.
I'm hoping Sharon hasn't really left the room, so to speak, because I have a question for Sharon.
Sharon, are you there?
I'm still here.
Oh, good.
Great, great, great. Okay, so I think everybody knows that we have an issue that we would be coming in for a reserve fund transfer on, which is evaluating the, this is for fiscal year '20, but it has an impact on '21 as well. We were under the assumption that the town used encumbered funds, allowed encumbered funds. The other day, I heard some stuff, and I just want to get the actual story, that perhaps that's not the case, and therefore, funds that we had carried forward from fiscal year '19 and had thought would be used in a certain way this year in fiscal year '20 might not have been. So Sharon, if you could tell me whether or not there is a fund from fiscal year '19 in which there was $14,278 that, from which we would have used some funds to pay for the item that we're talking about, the reserve fund transfer?
Correct. So, yeah, I spoke with Kathy about it, and you would always, you always encumbered funds for your contracted services that went out and did your evaluations for you. The problem was, we were always encumbering funds, and all of their inspections actually happened in July and August. So this was, so this year, you know, when I'm looking at them, and that's when I talked to Kathy, I said, "So truly, your '21 budget should be paying for their inspections for July and August and whatever, and, you know, like, they're going to do it during the summer. Your '21 budget should be paying for it." So that's what I did for '20. Once '20 started, I used your '20 budget to pay for those. And honestly, you, and I've been checking it, and you guys were really coming in spot on until you got that $4,000 bill that got dropped in your lap that you guys had no say over. That's the only thing that's messing up your budget. This was the, I tried to explain to Kathy, this '20 was kind of the transition year to get you on the right schedule, to make your inspections and your budget line up for the correct fiscal year.
Well, again, because we were under the assumption or misunderstanding or whatever that the encumbered funds were there, are the, so there are no encumbered funds?
Not, there were minor encumbered funds that were used for utility bills and such, but no huge encumbrance for your inspectors, which is why you needed that $4,000 reserve fund for that new bill that you guys got stuck with, for something that got mandated from the state.
The utilities, right.
Yeah.
So where did the $14,000 go?
It just got closed out in last fiscal year, so it was part of last year's free cash.
Okay, that was unclear, apparently, to Kathy. So as I said, we were thinking that the money for the $4,000, we've already spent, and this is how we were thinking, the $14,000, whatever, was there.
Yeah.
And we had some expenses for data collection, which is what this money is spent for. This is data collection out in the field done by contractors as opposed to the data collection that we can do with in-house staff. We don't have enough staff to be able to do the 600 parcels that we're supposed to do as a minimum each year, okay, for higher outside. So that outside staff, we paid, you paid, using some of the encumbered funds. This is how I understand it.
She got muted somehow.
Chris, she's been muted.
Mary, can you hear us?
Jeff, can you find Chris, tell him?
Mary, we cannot hear you. I don't know if you can hear us. There could very well be a conversation going on that we can't hear, if we've been muted.
Maybe he might have hit a button, I don't know. Mary, all of a sudden. I wonder why.
Want a number?
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your, enter your, please enter the meeting password. Follow by, you are in the meeting now. There are 12 participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded. You are, you have been put on hold by the host. You cannot listen or talk until the host releases the hold. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself. You are unmuted.
21, so 21 year, you're going to need that transfer of, you know, the reserve fund and the $4,000 to the state mandate. For 21, you should be fine.
And to be clear, we do not have in our budget for '21. Next year's $4,000, and that is because the board's view was that the OR is getting some pushback about the, the idea of mandating that every year we have to spend $2,000 for a contractor to assess, evaluate rather than the two utilities that we have. We're kind of thinking that maybe that this year is something they change, or that we may find that the process to do the evaluation they want is simple enough that Kathy can do it in-house. Yeah, so at this moment, there is not a $4,000 sitting in there for next year, but that is something that, you know, can be put pretty above board about, that in fact, that will be coming from, likely coming. We don't know yet.
Could I ask you a question?
John has a question, please.
First of all, Mary, apologize, I think we lost the connection for a few seconds here. I think we have the gist, though. I think much of what you and Sharon were discussing regarding the $4,000 will be an item that will have to come into play when you speak to the finance committee and build your FY '21 budget thusly. Tonight, as you know, we're here to validate your 1/12 budget, and I just had a, so I just had a question. As we see it today, on the spreadsheet that Sharon gave us this morning, it's $225,270. Is that correct?
Interesting. Well, that's not the budget I have in front of me. Peter, how about you? You have a budget in front of you with that number?
Yeah, I mean-
Okay.
That seems right.
So Sharon, that number does not include Kathy's raise, is that correct?
It should. Why wouldn't it?
We were told that the numbers we're looking at, Peter, did not have the department head salaries annualized in them for FY '21, that's why.
Oh, okay, yes. So I did not recompute, if I have to put Kathy's raise into that, I mean, that number could go up by 700 bucks, but it's not going to be a big difference from what's on that spreadsheet.
Would it be advisable to approve this budget tomorrow night and make sure we get a firm number?
That includes that.
That includes that, 700 and whatever it is?
Yes.
That's, that's fine. I mean, John already asked me to put that in, and he wanted it, he's already asked me to give it to him for tomorrow, so.
Yeah, okay.
We'll have everybody tomorrow.
All right, we'll approve the assessor's budget tomorrow, then. I just want to make sure it's a solid number here, that we approve, okay?
Okay.
So based on, based on everything Mary and Peter are saying, that base of 225, 270 is fine to start the fiscal year with. It includes the basic pieces at 1/12 that you'll be able to get done in July, correct?
Peter, I'm going to have to go with your comment, whatever you're saying, because truthfully, that's not what I have in front of me.
What are you looking at, Mary?
I have a final adjusted fiscal year '21 budget and then a COVID-adjusted fiscal year '21 budget, and the bottom line of the COVID-adjusted budget is 232,960.
Right.
And Mary, both of those, both the final adjusted and the COVID-adjusted, both of those include what I believe to be the assessor's salary at $97,645, which I believe is what we voted for as an approved budget, so.
That's what it says. That's what it says.
Okay, well, we'll have the town accountant validate that tomorrow night.
I think, I think we'd like to have the accountant validate this for tomorrow night and make sure we've got it solid.
But we don't need them to participate. I think, all things being equal, if that's the number, we're, we're in good shape.
Yeah, you don't, you don't have to participate tomorrow night. Sharon will be on the call anyway, and we'll just have this all cleaned up for tomorrow night. Is that okay with everyone?
That's, that's fine. I mean, it'll be a public meeting, and I may listen in anyway.
All right, right, right.
Are we looking at the 225, 270 number, or are we looking at the 232, 960 number?
Well, I think, I think it'd be wise that-
The 1/12 budget is 1/12 of your annual budget, so your total budget is, we're rounding, $200,000. The only thing we need to vote for July 1st is 1/12 of that.
I understand that.
Yeah, we just need to, yeah, so.
State was good at those two. We did like it.
Yeah, I mean, so we're, you know, the difference between 200 or 220 or whatever, I mean, it's minimal. It's go, 1/12 of either one is going to be enough to get us through the first three weeks, because then we'll have town meetings and we'll have the actual budgets for '21.
If, if the board is, sorry, the select board is comfortable with that approach, I'm not going to interfere with their job, but I'll watch tomorrow night.
You can watch tomorrow night. I can, I can send you the, my spreadsheet when I redo it.
Okay.
If you would like, so you can see what I've put in for the assessors.
Okay, sounds good.
And Sharon, just double check with Kathy tomorrow on what she understands.
I will do that.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have everyone on the same page tomorrow night. That would be a good thing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the town clerk budget. Do we have someone from the town clerk's office on the conference call?
Did Liz confirm she was going to join us?
No.
Okay.
You can hold that to tomorrow night.
We'll hold that for tomorrow night. Jeff, you can-
I'll loop back with her.
Loop back, please. Planning board.
Real, real quick, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to introduce that issue for tomorrow night. The funding for the town clerk for FY '21 is a little different because there's the budget, which we'll talk about, then there's the article.
Right.
So we'll have to be mindful that we're going to intersect-
Okay.
-with Article IV, and we should have some conversation with Mr. Ritter about the article, because last week's finance committee meeting included some comments by the chair about his displeasure with the way the, the article is written and how the structure of the raise is playing in, so we'll want to, we'll want to vet that pretty well tomorrow night.
Okay.
In addition to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. The planning board. Do we have someone here from the planning board to talk about their budget?
Hi, Mark, this is Karen.
Hi, Karen, how are you?
I'm doing all right.
Good. Do you want to go over your budget, please?
Sure, this planning board budget shows the no COLA adjustment, and it's, it's between $300 and $400 under the 0%. So we did that just by reducing the professional services line item.
Okay. Any questions, Gina?
None, nope.
John?
Karen, what number are you budgeting to for FY '21?
FY '21, the bottom line was 95579. The bottom line was 95579.
Okay, so Sharon, I'm guessing.
Are you talking about salaries?
You cut out. I'm sorry, Sharon, can you, I mean, Karen, could you repeat that?
Can you repeat that, Karen?
I'm sorry, the bottom line or the salary number?
Bottom line.
Uh, 95579.
So Sharon, I'm guessing that number includes the increased salary for the town planner?
Yes.
Because again, the number that we're looking at from the spreadsheet was much smaller. And if that number is confirmed this evening as supporting the town planner, I'm fine voting that number.
Okay, does that look right to you, Sharon?
I, I think we're having a whole disconnect here that we have departments that are giving you their 0% budget and you're looking at the 112 budget. Am I, am I right on that?
Well, I think because.
No.
The, the way I view this is what we approved tonight.
If I could. Sharon, I think there's a little bit of confusion to your question. The first batch of budgets report to us. We were approving those for FY '21. That's cleanup work. But per the 112 budget guideline, the select board has to approve the 112 budgets overall for the entire town. So therefore, organizations like the town clerk, the assessors, the planning board that don't report to us fall under a different dialogue. We're, we're reviewing the impact of those 112 budgets this evening for preparation and submission to the Department of Revenue. Does that make sense?
It does. I, yeah.
And what we want to do is to confirm that the FY '21 base budget, excuse me, the, the 112 budget, we want to ensure that it includes the department head annualized salaries. So when we, when we do the math for the 112, I want the number in there.
Okay.
So as we said with the assessors, the town clerk, now the planning board, if you're telling us that 95579 that Karen just indicated includes that salary, full salary for Karen in FY '21, I'm fine with that, but.
Unless you, if you're not sure and you want to review it, we can do it tomorrow night too, Sharon, whatever's good for you.
Well, I. I will update the spreadsheet like John and I talked about earlier in the meeting. I will update it to make sure that the 112 for July includes.
Yeah.
The annual salary for all the department heads.
Right, that, because it needs, it needs to include that. So we just want to be sure, that's all.
Right, so what you've, and that's what I said earlier. So what you're looking at for any one of the budgets, if you increase, I mean, the bottom line of the 112 budget that I sent to you this afternoon would have to go up by only $7,000 between all of those lines for it to include the department head salaries.
Okay.
It's 500 there, 700 there, 400 somewhere else. But basically, what you're looking at is the 112 budget for July and that's what you need to approve.
Okay, so it would be best that we had those numbers for each.
I, I can adjust all of those numbers to make sure it includes the annualized salary for the department head.
Perfect.
But, yeah.
All right.
But Karen, 0% budget is what we need for the annual town meeting. The, the 112 budget you need for July just needs to get us through the first three weeks in the fiscal year.
Right, and we have to, we have to vote on both.
Right, and you, I mean, and you have to vote on that, but it doesn't have to. The guidelines were it has to be at least 1/12 of our annual, of our annual budget for '20, which it is. It is more than our 1/12. That kind of, that satisfies the state and that 1/12 budget only has to get us through three weeks until I, we have our annual town meeting.
Sharon, just a quick clarification. We're not here to approve the planning board's FY '21 budget. That's not our job. They don't report to us. That work will be done by the Finance Committee. So Karen, I don't know if you've met with the Finance Committee yet, but that, that's probably something that's, you know, in play as they approach the annual town meeting in July.
Sure.
But we do need to vote on the.
I just met with them initially.
But we do need to vote on the 112 budget, so we'll just wait for the spreadsheet from Sharon for tomorrow.
Does the 0% guideline, Karen, impact operations for you at all for next fiscal year?
Um, no. No, it's just, you know, that money is either generally used for regulation development changes.
And does the budget that we're talking about here include 100% of your salary? Or does your salary get split with other line items?
Um, it gets split. Um, I'm, I'm proposing that it not get split.
Could you explain that a little bit?
I took my salary out of the Economic Development Committee budget because I don't intend to staff them in FY '21.
And how much was that?
Um, I don't know. I think Peter is on the screen and he has that number.
So if it's coming out of the Economic Development budget, you're trying to put that now into the planning budget for FY '21?
No, sir, it's a reduction in hours.
Oh, I see, okay. And was that, was that a change in your work for the economic, supporting the Economic Development Committee? Was that approved by the planning board or was that just done unilaterally?
Nope, that's me doing it unilaterally.
I see. And when does that affect of Karen?
As soon as you'd like.
As soon as I'd like?
I'm sorry, as soon as.
I see.
I'm sorry.
Perhaps we should have a conversation with the Chair about that, but I, I wanted to make sure that if there's any financial impact for FY '21 on the planning board side, that we'd see it. And if it's just a reduction in hours, then it's a net, it's a net zero. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, I'm all set.
All right. Um, well, we're gonna vote on this tomorrow night.
Yeah, seems pretty straightforward, though.
Uh, zoning. Mr. Ritter.
No, that would be Karen.
Karen, you have the zoning budget?
Hello again.
Hi.
Um, the board adjusted this one by agreeing to reduce my hours from 10 to 7 hours per month. So when we develop these budgets, we assume one meeting per month. And we started at 10. I think we've traditionally turned back money in the salary line item, so it's not a, it's not a tough reduction. And then a slight reduction in professional services from 3,500 to 2775 to make the difference. Again, with the way, the changes in the way that the board is approaching having support at its meetings using the provisions of Chapter 53G to do peer review, they're getting more consultant review and having applicants pay for it rather than pay for it themselves.
Is that in, sorry, Karen, is that in regards to the reduction for professional services? Or does that justify your 10 hours down to 7 hours?
Uh, no, that's for the professional side of things.
Okay, so because the applicant is funding more, paying for more of the work that needs to be done, we're seeing the reduction in professional services by $725?
Yeah.
Okay. And your, your hours are out of the clerical salaries line?
Yes.
And you're saying that
Yeah, it's a combination.
In fiscal year '20, you were funded for 10 hours of clerical service to the zoning board, but you're going to reduce to 7 hours?
Yeah.
And that's in the direction of the zoning board? Or their, their input's been provided on that?
Yeah.
No questions, Mr. Chairman?
No questions?
Validate, we'll validate that.
We'll validate that tomorrow night as well. Okay, thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you.
We'll wait to hear from.
Got the Economic Development next.
Town accountant tomorrow night with a spreadsheet and then we'll vote this stuff in. I just want to make sure we've, we've got it right before we vote it in. Economic Development. Mr. Barbary.
Hey. Yeah, I think we just had, you just had the discussion with Karen from the viewpoint of her determination to not support the committee. She had circulated a, a budget redraft which changed the numbers that the committee had recommended for appropriation for next year, which the committee, of course, hasn't seen and I don't support. If she doesn't want to work for the committee, that, that's her determination, I guess, but I don't think it's appropriate for the committee to lose the dollars for staff because we're gonna need a replacement. And my opinion is I don't want just a, the minimal clerical. We need somebody that's gonna fulfill the role that was designated for that staff person, which is reviewing of grants in more of a professional position just than just the clerical. So I don't know what budget you've got to work off your 112, but it should be the full, at least the last number I had was, hold on one second. I'm grabbing it off the printer.
All right.
So the last budget request that the Economic Development Committee looked at was a total of $14,067. No, hold on, your request, no, that's the old. So I'm looking at, I think it was 14,000 roughly. Which is what last year's was.
So that, that figure was inclusive of the staff support?
Yes.
I see. Sharon, what number are you carrying with staff support? Do you have it?
I'm looking for it right now. The original request for 21, yes, included $11,000 for salaries with a bottom line of 14,395. The 20 budget was 14,067, so they take a little out of professional services. I mean, they can easily come to a zero budget for Economic Development.
Yeah, the last budget I had was 14,208. Do you have that one?
Um, that's what I'm, look, 14,208.
Yeah.
Was the 1% budget.
Right.
So your 20 budget was 14,067. So if we, you know, take $140 out of your purchased services, you'll be at a zero budget.
Okay, that, that's fine. I think that, that's what I would suggest the budget we use rather than the revised one Karen provided.
Okay.
So that'll be reflected in tomorrow night's numbers.
Okay, so that'll be reflective in tomorrow night's numbers as well, right?
I, I do have, I have a question about who will fulfill the clerical role for the Economic Development Committee? Because if I've got this right, and Sharon, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if I have this correct, the 10,9, if I'm reading it right here, 10,677 for the clerical salaries, that's for the town planner filling that role. And that reflects the salary adjustment that was given by this board back in September. So my question is if we don't have somebody who is a town planner who's gone through the, the salary adjustment with this board, who's taking that role? And is that then an accurate, good salary for that person?
And it will be.
So who would fill clerical sal, who would fill the clerk's role for the Economic Development Committee?
I, that, I guess, remains to be seen.
That is a good question and I will schedule an Economic Development Committee meeting as soon as I can. And if you, the board can put in a couple of weeks after my meeting a discussion on that, because I think that's gotta be the overall discussion of, you know, how do we find somebody, what's it's gonna cost and how do we go about it?
Well, it may be contract.
We need somebody to fill the professional role.
Peter, that might be contract services as well, right? You might be hiring someone.
How many hours a week is, how many hours was Karen?
How many hours a week is this position, Karen?
Five.
Five?
So again, I would just point.
Personally, I think you should revisit the whole situation.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we can approve this right now.
Okay. Karen, so what would your new hours be? I, I think you, are you 32 hours?
30.
30? And so you're giving back three hours for the zoning board and you're giving back five for the Economic Development Committee? Does that put you then at, if I can do the math, 22 hours a week?
Um, and then that's seven hours a month for the zoning board.
Oh, it's monthly, okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
And same with.
So how many hours a week?
Economic and planning were the two positions that were kind of connected.
And so how many hours a week would you be working, Karen, moving forward?
Uh, 30 plus covering zoning board.
And zoning board is how many hours a month?
Seven.
Seven? Okay. All right, so we will revisit this again.
Yeah, and again, I think, you know, if Karen's withdrawing, then the Economic Development 112 has to reflect full funding for somebody to do the role. Maybe it's contracted.
Yeah.
Knowing how many hours it is, maybe Mr. Barbary can give us a job description that we can post and look for help on, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, other board business. Crosswalk at Central Street.
So I think Chris is gonna pull up just a couple of slides to show people who are watching what the changes to Central Street are gonna look like. Thanks, Chris. Can you run it like, yeah. So everyone knows who's driven down Central Street of late that they've repaid and they're gonna notice that.
Talking to somebody else.
Oh, okay. Um, right now, the crosswalks are gone and they'll be, they'll be replaced. So I think most folks know that Holliston has a complete streets policy that was drafted and accepted by Mast D O T back in January. And so Central Street kind of becomes one of the first steps that we have to come in line with our complete streets policy. So what you're about to see are, are first steps towards what complete streets will look like for Holliston. And so the first thing is the existing crosswalk. Thank you, next slide. The existing crosswalk at the fire station will be removed. It is in poor placement in front of the ambulance bays and it will be replaced later this summer with a new crosswalk at Markaronian Way, which is the next slide. So Markaronian Way, Markaronian Way connects the municipal parking lot behind the fire station to the sidewalks out on Central Street to give access to the businesses there. So in terms of complete streets and improving connectivity, this is, this is a great change. It's gonna give people direct access from Mudville, from the rail trail back behind the parking lot, people using the parking lot to get out directly onto Central Street and then with the crosswalk, give them access to the other side. Next slide, please. So you can see where the proposed site will be. It will again connect Markaronian Way to the full sidewalk, complete sidewalk on the opposite side. It will also improve ADA accessibility from what we currently have or what was just removed by the, in front of the fire station with a current. removed by the, in front of the fire station, with a curb cut into the existing sidewalk. And it will, it's moved just a couple of feet down the street, so it's going to retain the same sightlines and visibility. Next slide, Chris. What will be gone permanently is a crosswalk from the CVS parking lot over to, I think that's Front Street there, Vine Street, Front Street. This sidewalk does not meet any complete street standards. It starts and ends in the middle of an intersection, and it's unsafe, creates conflict for people who are walking or biking, so it's going to not return. It's going to be removed permanently. It's also a redundant crosswalk. It exceeds the Federal Highway Administration guidelines as well as Mass DOT recommendations for the number of crosswalks within 500 feet. If you go just a couple, like 200 feet down the road, you're going to see a crosswalk at Railroad and then again at the rail trail crossing, so it's a redundant crosswalk. That's it for the changes. I just wanted to put a visual up so residents know what's coming, and I want residents to also know that there's a plan here. And I want to point something out. The engineer, there is no engineering when we do routine roadwork like this. The reason why we can say with some degree of confidence that these are the right changes to make really comes from the Harriman Report, the Streetscape Plan that was done back in 2017. It gives us some guidance for where to place crosswalks to improve connectivity. We're still a long way away from being able to do this townwide. So when these roadwork projects are done, again, there's no engineering that goes with them. We need to have a sidewalk study that gives us a plan for how to install sidewalks and crosswalks so that we can do it to improve connectivity and walkability. So I just want to, you know, put a plug in there for, again, the need for a sidewalk study so that in the future, when these routine yearly roadwork maintenance projects are done, we have a plan that brings improvements for people who are walking and people who are biking. So I don't know if anyone on the call has any questions. Mark, I don't know if you would take questions or if you are done, have any?
Absolutely. Anyone have any questions for Tina? Mary? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tina. It's a great report, and there's been a lot of people concerned about Central Street over the years. This is a really, if I may say, a right step in the direction. All right. Any questions, Sean?
No.
Okay. And you don't need a motion?
No, no. Actually, I'm sorry. Jeff, I think we do need a motion. I think we need a motion to approve the location of the new crosswalk connecting Markaronian Way to the opposite side of Central Street. And I believe we also need a motion for the permanent removal of the crosswalk. I'm not sure if it was a board vote that put it in place, I'd take your advice on this one, but for sure, we need a motion to add the new crosswalk down by Markaronian Way.
John?
Typically, when we talk about roadway issues, whether they're one ways or things of that design, we get an order given to us in writing, I think by the highway superintendent.
Okay.
And he then has to have it certified by the town clerk, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
If I'm not mistaken. So I would recommend that we-
Do a motion to do that.
Put this into the basket of that type of a process, Tina, to be consistent with other changes we make so that DPW understands exactly what we're doing. There's a term that they use, it's an order of something, what's, do you know that?
It's, you'd be amending the traffic rules and regulations.
Right, but you get the idea. I would check with Sean to see if Tommy Smith can draw up the order for us to vote on.
So let's do a motion to have Tom do that.
Okay, so move to-
Direct the Department of Public Works to prepare the orders for the board's approval associated with these crosswalks.
As outlined on the map.
Yeah. Second, with the comment, by the way, I did talk to Sean on Friday, so, but that doesn't satisfy the need for an order, but I have closed the loop with him and he is aware of this change, but you'd like an order, so I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Jeff, if we were to get that order by Thursday?
Not likely.
Okay. By Monday?
We'll get to it as quickly as we can.
There you go. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, when they're doing their street painting, it would be nice to have this organized, so I would tell them to make it a priority.
Okay.
Election warrant, Mr. Ritter.
So, working with the town clerk and the board, you know that the municipal election will be held on Tuesday, on June 23 of this next month. And in preparation for that, the board needs to execute the election warrant. This is separate from the process that has historically taken place because the election warrant is normally part of the annual town meeting warrant. So we need to issue and sign and have a motion to approve the warrant. The town clerk and I have been working together with her assistant to come up with the document that's before you tonight.
In the folder, or is it?
It's in the folder, it's in your packet of information. It's in the folder there. Mark, if you wanted to, yep. I've got a copy here.
Perhaps I could, if I could make a recommendation for the clerk to read this, being an official document, but we should-
You would like me to read the annual town election warrant?
Yes, please, if you could read that for the public.
This is to any constable of the town of Holliston, greetings. You are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town, Holliston, who are qualified to vote in town elections, to vote at, all voters in precincts 1, 2, 3, and 4, to vote at the high school gymnasium on Tuesday, June 23, 2020, from 12 noon to 4 p.m. for the following purpose: to cast their votes in the town election for the election of candidates for the following offices: select board and highway surveyor, vote, well, I'll just read the offices, assessor of taxes, housing authority, school committee, board of health, board of health, trustees of public library, finance committee, park commissioner, park commissioner, planning board. And of those, the housing authority and the planning board are five-year terms. One board of health position and one park commissioner position are two years, the remainder are three-year terms. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting true copies thereof attested on and within the town hall, library, senior center, police station, seven days at least before the date of said meeting. Hear of fail not, and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said meeting. Then we need to vote on this.
All right.
So move to accept the annual town election warrant for Tuesday, June 23, 2020, for the town of Holliston, as just read.
Second.
Second with a question.
Yes.
Does it mention the location as the Holliston High School, Tina?
It does. All voters from precincts 1, 2, 3, and 4 to vote at the high school gymnasium.
So to the extent that this plan that we've asked the chief to draft to us impedes or impacts that decision, are we allowed to amend this, Jeff, if needed? If, for example, we move the location from the high school to somewhere else? Not that I envision that, but we don't know.
Well, I mean, yes.
We could make that kind of an adjustment.
Yes, I mean, you don't know what's going to happen in two weeks.
So that's my second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Yes, we're going to sign it. Meeting minutes of May 18, 2020. Do we have a motion to accept?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 18, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Review of annual term meeting warrant, Jeff.
I made some further updates and sent it out to the board on Friday and the finance committee on Friday and other interested parties who have a stake into, in the annual town meeting warrant. Just want to point out a couple of changes that I've made and be cognizant of the fact that if we're on course and on schedule for the annual town meeting, this board will have to sign it sometime toward the end of June-
Right.
-for posting. So we have an appropriate amount of time there. There's a little bit of flexibility, but I always build in, you know, a Murphy's Law into that number. So the, I just want to draw your attention to Article 4, again, John brought it up. The Article 4, I think the explanation or the comments section addresses the issue of the salary and the stipe, and the retroactive compensation.
Has Mr. Talaman looked at this article?
Oh, yes. Yes, he's waited on it, and he says that, you know, all elected officials have to be approved-
Right.
...at town meeting and their compensation. So for now, I moved Article 5 up to Article 4 and include the total amount, and that number will come down, obviously, significantly in the annual town meeting for FY '22.
Okay.
But the, to Mark's question, the town council recommended that the salary and the retroactive payment be within the same article?
Correct. Yep.
So that'll have to be conveyed to a friend's, I see Mr. Sparrow on the call. Ben, if you hear us, that's something that'll have to be conveyed to your board tomorrow night, that Article 4 was crafted by town council. No one's trying to handle this in a way that is undesirable, but I know your board had some questions last week about why it was like this. Ken felt that by having the additional retro in there, it kind of clouded things up, but if there's a, if there's some comments on a way to make it better, you all should let us know, but this is per council. You okay with that, Ben? Would you be able to report that back to your committee?
I certainly, can you hear me?
Yes.
I certainly can do that. I think the, there was two pieces of confusion. The first is we wanted to make sure that it was clear that the part of the funding was for retroactive and FY '20, so make sure that the FY '22 budget line would be adjusted accordingly. And then the second question was, how come the board of assessors and the select board have the FY '20 numbers included and we're not doing the same thing with the town clerk? I guess that was one of the questions that I heard last week during our meeting. We just met, so I just joined, so we wouldn't meet till next week to talk about it. Thank you.
And just to give you a little history with the town clerk's position, when she was hired, she was told by Paul LeBeau, who was the town administrator at the time, that she needed to get two certificates, and once she did, then they would definitely increase her salary. And she does have those two certificates, and so we want to keep our promises that we make to employees, and so that is, that is the history of this, just so you're aware.
Can you, this is Sharon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't, I don't think the question was ever, why the raise? And I know town council says it's okay to put it in one article, but I will, my preference completely is to have it in two because it skews her salary. So in '22, I mean, we're going to stand before town meeting and explain it, but it just looks downright horrible that we give her this huge raise in '21, and then in '22, we take it away. To have it in two separate articles, it makes it far more clear that we're adjusting '20, and then here's her new salary for '21, and when we're starting to build all of our budgets for '22, you have a clear start point. For me, I 100% prefer it in two articles. I know it can be in one, I think it's cleaner, and I want to say more, it's just cleaner, and as far as budgeting is concerned, it is much easier to have it in two articles, not one.
Questions, Tina?
No, just a comment. So Sharon, it's interesting you say that, though, because I would take from the comments of the finance committee last week, the chair in particular at our meeting on Monday night, that they're perfectly capable of explaining this. He pointed out when we approved the building inspector, maybe it was two weeks ago, but when we approved the building inspector's budget for well below the 0% guideline, when you put FY '21 up against FY '20, the chair had no problem explaining that the decrease of $12,000 was due to a software purchase. So I wouldn't think that it was a difficult thing for the finance committee or the select board to explain to the voters why there was a decrease. I think we see it happening elsewhere. So my question would-
I mean, we, we do, and I think it's easier to say, hey, we bought software last year and we're not buying it this year. When we're talking about one person's salary, I think it just looks worse, for lack of another word, I can't come up with, to say, you know, here's her, you know, here's her salary in '21, and, you know, look, we reduced in '22. It's explainable, and I get that from a budgeting standpoint, when I'm going to stop building anybody's budget to say we got a 2% increase, it is much cleaner to just have a legitimate number in '21, not one we all have to adjust before we start working on '22.
Jeff, I'm going to have, I'm going to have Tina, the clerk, read the comments of Article 4 because it explains it. We'll have you read that so that people who are listening can follow along.
Based on the advice from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, town meeting must approve the annual compensation for all elected town officials. In reference to the town clerk's salary above Article 4, this additional compensation would bring the position of town clerk in alignment and schedule of other department heads. The 17, excuse me, 77,917 is total compensation for FY '21, and the 6,798 represents the increase she should have received in fiscal year '20, consistent with the department head salaries and at market value. However, because the town clerk is an elected official, town meeting must set the salary at the annual town meeting. So Sharon, I respect your comments. If we just set them aside for a moment, what number would you think should go in the FY ' '20? To answer Ben Sparrow's question as to why is FY '20 left blank for the town clerk, which number would you think better represented the information the town meeting voter should have? Should it be the 77,917, which was her adjusted salary for FY '21, or should it be, in your mind, the salary prior to that, which I think I've got it here, is 69,515?
69,000 puts her where everybody else was for '20. 77 should be where she is for '21.
Inclusive of the raise?
And that's inclusive of her department head rate. We, to Sharon's point-
21 is supposed to be her salary annualized like everybody. The 6,000 was what she didn't get in '20 when everybody else got their raise, so the 6,000 should be in her salary line for '20.
John, you have a comment?
I think Sharon has some misgivings about the fact that FY '22 will result in a wage reduction or wage correction. Maybe we can add something in the comment field that suggests that to the reader, that this wage will be revisited for appropriateness for FY '22 funding. It's going to go down to some extent, right? We don't know what it is, that's all subject to appropriation and whatever guidelines are put out there for next year. But would that help you, Sharon, differentiate in the comment field what the intention of the money for FY '22 was going to be?
I mean, it, it will. I just, I think it's just the perception to the voters, like, we gave her this great raise, and then the very next year, we take away, whatever, five grand of it. That just looks-
Yeah, I, I hear you, but I think the comment field will help, yeah, I think the comment field will help the town meeting member understand what's going on, and it'll give us a good record of what decision was made.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want to be standing there for the '22 annual town meeting when somebody stands up and says, hey, why'd you decrease the, you know, town clerk's budget? Everybody else got a raise, but she didn't.
Right, right.
And that's, you're going to have to explain all over again. It's because she had two years of a raise in one year, and now we have to take it away.
And I'd prefer less articles overall.
Okay. All right, so we're going to work on this comments section for Article 4 for next, can you have it ready for next Monday?
Absolutely.
Okay. Why don't we do that? And that way, we'll take Sharon's- And that way, we'll take Sharon's concerns into consideration. All right? Anything else you want to talk about, annual town meeting?
No, I think that current year, so I removed any reference to the current year, fiscal year transfers, because we don't have any current year fiscal year transfers.
Okay.
So I removed that article, article eight.
Are the job and wage classification plans up to date?
No.
So that's got to be updated.
Mary, Mary is going to give that information to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
There was a question at the Finance Committee last week about why there were only two articles. I confirmed today that that is the intent, because the third article that they used to carry has been memorialized, and they don't need to change it any longer. I sent the response by Ms. Pierce over to the Finance Committee so that they could see it. The two articles that Mr. Ritter has, eleven and twelve, are sufficient.
Yep.
Anything else?
Article twenty-four, the chair of the Finance Committee had recommended that I remove any reference to free cash, which I've done. And article twenty-five is the same one, any reference to taking money out of free cash for these two articles. A funding source will be determined through the, through the motion process. I have not, you may have seen today, an email from Paul Solnier regarding the subject system at the town hall.
Yes.
I was starting to prepare an article for that. He said they're not ready yet, so he suggested that that be put off until fall.
Okay.
Which is on the fall town meeting list.
Okay.
Of articles. And hopefully, they'll be ready at that point.
I hope so. Because we're losing income upstairs.
Mark, I have one question.
Yes.
The library director presented the consultant's report.
Yep.
We were waiting for it. It's arrived. It's a very interesting read. We have a capital request for the libraries of sixty-five thousand. In that report, they've identified what looks like their, you know, sort of the library's capital improvement plan, and they have FY twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three expenses for improvements for maintenance and repairs listed in the report.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure if their board has voted on it, if there's been any action with this report. It was simply shared with us, but in reading it, what I noticed is, they only have two items for maintenance or repair. One is ten thousand dollars for paint and twenty thousand for carpets. So that, it looks like in this report, there's thirty thousand of maintenance and repairs for the library for this year. I just hold that up against what we have in our article sixteen here, which is sixty-five thousand. I don't know if the board would give us clarification, if the report changes anything, if they voted on it, considered the information that's in it, but that's a question I would have.
Can you ask Leslie about that?
Yep. And I think our facilities manager would agree with you on that. That number is pretty high.
Okay.
Okay.
I assume we're going to, the library's going to present capital according to the plan that's in that report. But I guess that's my other question. Is that something that they are going to take forward for future capital requests?
Unknown. Unknown at the moment.
Okay.
All right. Does that take care of?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Year-end and reserve fund transfers.
Chairman, if I could, go back to the warrant.
Yes.
Sorry, I had some more business, if you don't mind.
No, go right ahead.
Article number thirty and thirty-one, you folks may recall, these are mechanisms that we've worked on with our electricity supplier, energy supplier, and also the sustainability coordinator to both make arrangements for improved costs, costs associated with electricity aggregation, and also a clause to allow voters to elect a one-cent monthly assessment on electric bills for the purposes of funding the sustainability coordinator. Now, when we created that position a couple of years ago, it was built upon a couple of presumptions. The, the folks that were advocating for the position said it saves us money. Mr. Zetic joined our organization about six months ago. I think, in my opinion, he's doing a very good job. He's very active, but he's, his funding from the state in FY twenty is running out. We, we embraced this opportunity to take this one-cent assessment on electric bills as a way to pay for his salary in FY twenty-one. It was, and it remains, a mechanism quite legal and above board and very generally used. I think this was discussed in one of our open meetings with the, was it Colonial Power that came in? I believe that's who it was. And it was a, it was a very creative way to help fund the position. I would ask Mr. Sparrow if he's on the phone.
Yeah, she is.
Ben, we'll just, hey, Ben. Last week, there were some remarks made, I think by the chair, forgive me if it wasn't Ken, I do recall hearing some questions about this particular item. It didn't seem to sit well, that there was some kind of a money grab to fund this position. Ben, if you could help characterize your board's brief take on this item, to the extent that you have any recollection, we'd appreciate it, because it's critical to us to make sure this position continues into FY twenty-one. There aren't a ton of grants floating around at this time, given the COVID environment, and this particular method will give us the path to do that. As I mentioned, Colonial mentioned to us, this is a common tool to fund this position across the state. Can you give us some insight, Ben, as to what misgivings the Finance Committee might have on these otherwise innocuous, otherwise innocuous requests?
So what I recall from what was being said last week by, at the committee meeting, was the chair wanted to point out this particular article for us to review. Granted, I mean, I also caution, you know, the Finance Committee at the time, that this, these articles have not been fully reviewed by your board, and therefore, we don't want to get, we didn't want to get into too much detail, in my opinion, about what was going on. My understanding was, my recollection is that the chair of the Finance Committee was indicating this is on the warrant, and he might have some questions about it, and with respect to how we're funding this particular position in the context of previous understanding that we were going to look towards a grant to do so. And, you know, you made a very good point, Mr. Cronin, concerning the fact that we, we're in sort of extraordinary times, and we need to find ways to work on funding this position in an adequate way. I, the Finance Committee hasn't taken this up, so I don't think it's really something that I can really speak to beyond my recollection of what was happening. And I think, you know, given the context of everything, I think it's certainly something that we can talk about and address at a future date, once you've approved the language in the warrant.
If I recall correctly from Colonial, we'll raise somewhere around forty thousand a year. We, I, I still believe we intend to keep the sustainability coordinator as a contracted position, not a town employee at this time. The, the, the group that helped advocate for this position and Mr. Zetic ought to schedule some time, Ben, with your board, to explain this aggregation model and how effective it is to sustain the sustainability coordinator's position. I fully support it. I think it's a great use of local revenue to ensure that the community has the resources for this position going forward. So to the extent that your committee has any unanswered questions, I would welcome them to go through our friends with the Charles River Watershed Group, as well as Mr. Zetic. I think there are a lot of good questions and answers that can be got from that conversation. Okay?
Can I, the only follow-up I just want to say is that I understand, I look forward to hearing from Mr. Zetic about that. I just, I think the questions that'll probably come from my board, and I'm, I'm kind of spitballing here when I say this, is that I think they're going to ask, have we, are there grants available? I, I know there's a lot of uncertainty in this current environment, but, you know, have we explored that? Have we exhausted that particular avenue to make sure that, that it's not, that we're not trying to, that we have, that we haven't looked at everything that's possible out there to try to fund it without having to ask for, for funding from the residents? Because that was not what the original, the original intention that I understand when we first hired for the position.
Right. So Mr. Zetic's been with us about four months. He worked with the group on the municipal vulnerability grant, which we've deferred on, and he contributed on the Green Communities grant. Other than that, his activities have been around organizing and communicating sustainability programs through us to other stakeholders. His grant-writing opportunities have not been, he hasn't had the time to do that in the short period he's been with us. This aggregate program came to us, I think sometime in February, when we were looking at our colonial aggregation contract, and it's a perfect solution to fund most of the salary, but not potentially all of it, going forward, Ben. So I don't rule out future grants to fund the position, but this is one method by which we can assure that sometime in July, he'll have funding to keep going. Right now, there's nothing for FY twenty-one.
And with other communities using this as a tool to fund the same position, it seemed to us that-
It's a perfect mix.
This is a perfect mix.
So one, one last thing, if I could, Ms. Hein. There are two articles, Ben, you could possibly explain this to your group tomorrow night. The first one, per town council creates the kind of fund to receive the money and then be able to disburse it to the sustainability coordinator fund. That will require local action, or what do they call it, a special law at the legislature to create the fund, per their instructions. That's article number thirty, and then article thirty-one takes the money and funds the sustainability position. Okay? So it's kind of a two-step process. Got it?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
One other item, if I could?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter has, at the top of the document, a couple of teasers, areas that we might consider adding. Nine Green Street, LSP, we're still waiting for some information perhaps, including some funds. Nope, we're not, Tina's shaking her head. No.
I'm going to the top of the warrant here.
It's just a question mark.
Yeah, so it'll be, the discussion needs to be, and Scott Moles is supposed to be in touch with you, the discussion should be about increasing a line item in the Select Board's budget. Okay.
I've not heard anything on that.
Yeah.
But I will say that the Governance Committee may very well have some articles ready for us in July. I've had very brief conversations with Mr. Tyler, who's working on this group, and we think it's important to try to get the very clear changes that are, you know, staring back at us into the warrant during the time period that the new town administrator's coming on, so that we can clear the, the ground and the rules for that job description to operate.
Right.
Clearly and cleanly, without any collision between the special act and existing bylaws. So we, I, I don't know when we'll hear from Sam, but he'll be given a deadline. If he's got something ready, I'd like to put it in, simply because it coincides with the hiring of the town administrator.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. That's all I have.
I also do have a little information from, from Mr. Bernie Lynch. And I don't think it will affect the town warrant at all, but perhaps maybe under other business tonight, I'll read you his update that he sent me today. All right?
Yeah.
Won't you mention town administrator, remind me?
Just don't, just don't, make sure you don't mention any names.
Right.
Okay.
Right. No, his report doesn't mention any names. Year-end reserve fund transfers, Mr. Ritter?
Nothing.
Nothing? Any questions? No?
No.
Youth and family services software. Jeff?
So we've got Jaclyn Weiner on the call. Jaclyn, can you hear us?
So Jackie is on the agenda for tomorrow night, so she has suggested that we combine this topic with her budget.
Okay.
Well-
That's what she, that's what I had heard, anyway, this morning.
All right. So-
I'm happy to speak to it. I know it's late, but I'm happy, I'm here, so I'm happy to just give an update on our, you know, our continuing operations protocol, planning for reopening, and just some additional needs that the department has for our new normal, in terms of our model, the way we've been operating remotely. The electronic health record kind of goes along with that, so I'm hap, I'm happy, I'm here.
Great.
I'm happy to present.
Go ahead.
Good. Yeah, so, hold on, I need to write my notes. So we're working right now one hundred percent remotely, as everybody else is, and for the most part, it's going okay. We have all basic accounts right now. We have a telehealth platform called DocC.me, and it's a HIPAA-compliant platform for mental health professionals. And the basic account is okay for now, but we are running into some difficulties with sort of our record-keeping system while we're all working remotely. So we're looking to get a electronic health record that will help us streamline our, our client charts and health system, and also will provide me a little bit more oversight into client progress and record-keeping, and allow staff to access client charts remotely. So we were looking at a few different options for that. We were looking at a line item transfer from a line item in the budget for FPR for this year's budget, and going to apply to the fund for the cost of the health record, but we were also looking at into the CARES app as a possible funding source for that as well. And it looks like it could qualify for CARES app funding. So I just wanted to jump on and just keep everybody updated and answer any questions around the electronic, the use of electronic health records. It's very simple to what you might find in your own doctor's office. It's just a paperless way to manage client information and client charts. And so the cost of that is for Simple Practice, which is something, we looked into a few different options with Chris Mayo, and what we landed on with Simple Practice, which ends up being a yearly total of about twenty-one hundred dollars for the year. So that is what we are looking at. Tina, did you have any other, did you want me to speak to anything specifically?
Well, so I just wanted to jump in here, and this is, these are FY twenty changes that we're looking for here, purchases. Jackie has, and her staff have been working for the past two and a half months since the remote, the need to-
Yeah.
-operate remotely was put into place. She, like she mentioned, she's been making do, but Jackie is one of the few in our town who, not only is she a department head, she's also a practitioner. And so when you put a practitioner who's a department head in a situation like this, they just get on with it. They just do. And that's what she's been doing. And so I think what's happening now is Jackie's pulling back and saying, as a department head here, this is what I need to be able to do what I've been doing for the past two and a half months, to do it more efficiently and effectively. And so it's the DocC.me subscription, an annual subscription, Jackie, do I have that right, twenty-four hundred dollars?
So Simple Practice is twenty-one hundred dollars. And the DocC.me, which is a telehealth platform, it allows me to video chat with my clients, which is not, it's similar to Zoom, but it's, the DocC platform is specific for mental health providers. And that is for our yearly account, that's thirteen hundred dollars.
$1,300, okay. So my, my point, and I'm glad Jackie's here to talk about it tonight, is I think we should direct Jackie to make these purchases. And I think she should make these purchases, and we then submit the cost for reimbursement through the CARES Act. I think that these are critical changes that she's had to make to her service delivery model to meet the needs of our residents, and I think she's been excelling at doing it and has been able to meet the needs of our residents, but she's been doing it, you know, to the best of her ability, without the correct tools. These are the tools she needs.
Right.
To do the job that she's doing.
Has Chief Cassidy been in discussion with this?
I'm not sure if Jackie's had.
Yeah, I haven't had direct communication with Chief Cassidy. I've been working through a few different people who have been in touch with him, but it's definitely something that I'm gonna circle back to him about with regard. I've been in touch with Sharon.
Okay. And she recommended funding this way?
Yeah, she did.
Okay. Well, I think you need to talk to Chief Cassidy about this as well.
I'd be happy to weigh in, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please do.
Yeah, no, I was aware that this request was coming down the pike, and there are two separate lines underneath the CARES Act funding for which this would be eligible. The first one would be accelerated telework capacity, so this addresses the efficiencies for Jackie and for her staff. And the second line under which this should be eligible would be services and supports to residents in their homes. So I absolutely believe that this is an appropriate expense.
Perfect.
And if we can find it FY '20 funds, and then just submit for CARES Act reimbursement, I think it, we can make a very good argument to the state why it's an appropriate use of funds.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I think it's a crucial component of our reopening plan and our, sort of our new normal. You know, we're trying to really maximize our work, but we're all sort of remote.
Right.
So this, you know, this will definitely be a huge help to our department. It's a, you know, we're gonna be sort of doing a mix of both telehealth, and we hope to be able to see our clients face-to-face in what I'm sort of dubbing outdoor therapy. And so we're, you know, I think this is gonna be our new normal for a little bit. Being able to use these electronic systems.
Okay. I will take a motion, John.
Motion to approve a reserve, it would be a reserve fund transfer, correct, Jackie? It's not a line item transfer?
Reserve fund and transfer.
What was that, Sharon?
We could also do a line item transfer.
Oh, she's got the cash to do it?
Not within her department, but I, we can get it, like in the year-end transfers, when I take from balances over in other departments.
You know, Sharon.
With the liability.
Sharon, I think this meets the test of a reserve fund transfer, because it's unforeseen and it's as a result of COVID. So it might be cleaner, unless you disagree, to make it a reserve transfer? Do you have a preference?
Um, I don't really have a preference, but none of us can say it can be a reserve fund transfer, only the finance committee can, if they wanna consider it a, you know, extraordinary and unforeseen. I mean, I agree that it falls under unforeseen. We can do either one, I guess. We'd have to ask the finance committee for a reserve fund transfer, and if that doesn't come through, I can, I know I can, I've got other funds, I can make it a line item transfer.
The amount is $2,100?
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to approve a reserve fund transfer request for youth and family services, and the amount of $2,100 for a simple practice software.
Second with the comment, which is, hopefully to amend this, to add, and correct me, Jackie, I think I got this right, to add the DocV.me subscription as well for $1,300. Is that correct, Jackie?
Yeah, it's 1392, so it's really closer to 1,400.
Should the motion include, should the reserve fund transfer doesn't work out, then it will come out of?
Yes.
Can you?
To the extent, is that okay, Mr. Ritter, that we include optional motions? So in the event that the finance committee doesn't believe it meets the test of a reserve transfer, then a line item transfer would be the second part of the motion. And before I make that, I want to clarify, Jackie, because I think you gave us new numbers. The total amount of the motion should be what number, please?
For both items.
Total? Hold on. Uh, 3,504, $3,504 total. And I would just want to double-check with Chris, just to verify that number one more time.
What was the number again?
$3,504.
Okay. So that'll be my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Are you gonna verify that number?
I'm pretty confident in it. I just wanna make sure that I'm not off any, on any dollars or cents, but that's, that's been, both of them that Chris gave me.
Did you send him a message? Should we wait a couple of minutes?
That's, yes, he's good.
Is Chris on this call right now?
Can you, can you approve?
I am, but I'm gonna have to look through emails, because I did this about a month ago.
She's with us tomorrow night.
Can you just approve to fund those two things, and then we can come back to you with the dollar amount?
Yes.
I will be on tomorrow as well, presenting my budget.
We'll clean it up tomorrow night if it's not that number.
We'll clean it up tomorrow night, but I think we can, as Sharon said, the motion can approve both items, and we can revisit the number tomorrow night.
So I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries, thank you.
And if I can just say, it should be, once we submit this on June 5th, the money, if you listen to what the MMA has to say, and Sean Cronin at DLS and the ANF, Director, Chair, Secretary, he, this should, money should be coming in on a rolling basis, so you submit your, your reimbursement, and you're getting the money back. There does not seem to be a lengthy delay in having these approved, costs approved, so it may not be that we have to do a reserve fund transfer at all. The money may be in before the end of the fiscal year, so.
All right. Any other business that you would like to discuss?
I just wanted to circle back around to the comment about meeting with the planning board and put out the question whether or not that should be an executive session.
I don't think so. I think it should be open meeting.
Why do you think so, Tina?
Just the, you know, okay, I would just put it out there for discussion.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're negotiating any kind of an agreement.
I know, I was trying to find the reasons for executive session.
Yeah, and I really, you know, I think we had a meeting with them a while ago, was it last year? I think. And, or earlier this year, anywhere, early fiscal year '20. And it was good to have the planning board in here with some residents in.
Yeah.
And I think because we're also gonna be looking at the impact it has on commercial, bring them all in.
Right.
Give them all a chance to be heard, but, you know, I've heard loud and clear from the residents up there what they want. And it's very compelling, I gotta tell you. So I want to do the right thing. So put it out in the air.
Okay. That's all.
Any other business for you, Mr. Cronin?
No, sir.
Okay, I have an update from Bernie Lynch that I will, who is handling the screening for the new town administrator. There's 42 applicants. That we got by the deadline. The screening committee has been meeting to review, process, and consider resumes. They have selected a first round of individuals to be interviewed, and that will be occurring this week. Hoping to have finals chosen after the interviews, and then we will proceed to do reference and background checks. If successful, I expect we will have finalists presented to the select board the second week of June. Probably interviews the following week of 6:15. Okay?
Great.
So that's his update.
Did he indicate how many of the 42 they're going to be interviewing? Did he give you a number on that?
He didn't give me that number.
Okay.
Did we ever, did we ever discuss having Jay Tallerman, Town Council, play any role in the screening committee, or when we get to a list of final applicants, taking a pass at them as well?
Might be a conflict, because the town administrator would be his boss, right?
Do you see some value there?
I think as Town Council, he would have a very intimate understanding of things that are currently on the table for the town administrator to review upon hire, and I think there's a perspective there.
Yeah.
That has, has value. I don't want to mess with the integrity at all of the screening committee's responsibility and the way paradigm sets it up. I think that the more eyes looking at applicants, the better. And if Town Council is willing to play that role, I see no detriment, no downside to that, but I put it out there just for consideration, if either of you felt that there was a value in having Town Council review the finalists.
I personally don't. I think we've got a process in place, and I think if you introduce that kind of element, you're changing, you move the goalpost a little bit.
Okay.
And I've not seen a process at the chief level, the TA level, in my, my experience, where the Town Council weighs in.
Okay.
But I think I know why you're asking, because Jay certainly has a breadth of experience locally to draw upon, but I think we should stick with the plan.
Yeah.
Of individuals involved.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that update, Mark, that's helpful.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Motion to adjourn. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. It's 9:02. Good evening, and we'll see you tomorrow night. Good night.